Do we?
I would like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It is 6:02 PM, Wednesday, June 8th, 2022. We are meeting remotely via Zoom. This meeting is taking place virtually due to a law signed by Governor Baker. It will not be broadcast live on Willie Net TV Channel 1302, but it will be available at a later date as well as on the Mount Greylock YouTube channel within 24 hours of the meeting. If I could call the role Julia Bowen.
Here.
Jose Constantine.
Yeah.
Curtis Elfenbein.
Yeah.
Harry Green.
Here.
Stephen Miller.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectation and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. I apologize if you can hear my dog barking in the background. That's really annoying. And unfortunately, because of whatever I did to the audio. Hold on, hi, there we go. Okay, I think I fixed it, sorry about that. Um, we do not have anyone signed up for public comments, so, and I don't see anyone from the public here. So I think we can move on to the next agenda item, although I don't see our student representative either.
Yeah, I don't either, so I, it's hard to tell with, with busy, busy schedules, so I would suggest we move on. If she's able to join, we can come back to that item.
Great. Okay, next up is the approval of minutes. I would like to make a motion to approve the May 12th, 2022 minutes. Do I have a second?
Miller, I'll second.
Okay, Miller, seconds, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I.
Miller, I.
Thank you, that motion passes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the May 26th, 2022 minutes.
I'm a second to make it easier.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I.
Miller, I.
Thank you, that motion passes. Okay, next up, we have the principal updates, including the 2022-23 school improvement plans. I have Lanesboro Elementary first in the minute, so Nolan Pratt, do you want to start or stop?
Do I want to, of course, of course I do. Um, can I, I'll be straight up, I focused on the school improvement plan, I did not have an update ready. What I can tell you is that graduation is next Thursday at 10:00 AM at Lanesboro Elementary School. We have a lot of events that have happened since we've last met. Summer Fest was on Friday. It was well-attended. I think we planned on 450 people showing up, and it was probably 450 people that were there. The dunk tank line was all the way to the road, it seemed like. Students continued to try to dunk teachers and faculty. Before that was the Spring Concert, which was beautiful to see the gym packed again with families. It's the first time that the gym has been packed since graduation of 2019, so it's really good to see people in the building again. So that is a brief update. I'm going to dive into the school improvement plan now. Do I have permission to share my screen?
Jake, you might have to give them permission, for some reason I don't have that permission because I'm no longer host, Kerry's the host, or Kerry has to do it.
Should be all set, Nolan.
All right, thank you. So thumbs up if you can see it. Excellent, thank you, it was the first time I saw, get the trophy. So the school improvement plan has kind of started in March when I met with the school council and said, hey, let's talk about what we're doing, let's talk about where we want to go and what data do you want to see, I'll collect that data. Then we met in April and May, we kind of dove into the data. We started looking at years, 2018, which is when we regionalized, and we looked at all different aspects. We wanted to look at attendance, we wanted to look at socially-emotional data, academic data, et cetera, et cetera. With that, we came up with four different goals and objectives. They have no particular order, and the goal one's not better than goal two. They're numbered that way because it makes it easy to keep track of. So the first goal is student learning, specifically in ELA. We're going to look to increase our scores at MCAS, DIBELS, and benchmarks, specifically our subgroup categories, our high-needs students and our students with disabilities. The trend is that they do not perform to the level of the general ed population, and our objective is to close that gap. We're going to close that gap by continuing to implement Wit and Wisdom, which is our brand-new ELA curriculum that is really comprehension-focused. In grades K through 2, we will also be continuing to implement Foundations, which is a phonics-based reading program. And then we're going to begin to do data meetings. We did some beta testing with data meetings, setting them up, making sure they're efficient and running smoothly, what data to look at. So we will be doing bi-weekly data meetings, looking at ELA and math scores, but specifically focusing on the ELA piece of the Wit and Wisdom curriculum. Questions on goal number one? Kerry?
Yeah, see, this is the first year, right, of Wit and Wisdom, the new ELA curriculum.
We are including the first year.
Sorry, what? Oh, yeah, you're including the first year, yeah, understood. But how, how is it going? And is it only in certain grades this year and then expanding into other grades in the future?
So that is a fantastic question. We did a school-wide K through 6 rollout. And it has been done with fidelity, and when you're doing something new for the very first time and doing it well, it slows you down. Our teachers have been absolutely crushing it, and we have seen some great improvement with comprehension. And next year, we're hoping that now that the students have seen the language, they've seen the, this, you know, the phrases of stop and jot, the quick, right? They know what to do, they know what to do, they know what's coming next, they know how it's set up, kind of. We continue to hope to hit that ground running and just be more efficient, quicker, and still following it with fidelity. Other questions on goal one, I can move on to goal two. I'll move on to goal two. So our second goal is student attendance, which seems like a silly goal, but if you look back at 2018, I looked at the chronically absent, which is missing 10% of the school year or more. I'm going to read numbers from 2018 on. 2018, it was 7.9% of our students missed 18 days or more. 2019, 9.3% of our students missed 18 or more. Then 20 and 21, take this with a grain of salt because we all know what happened, 13.6% of students and 13% of students. So the school committee said we need our students to be in school. I agree, we need students to be in school. We have great teachers here that, once they're here, we can do the work that needs to be done. So the first thing we're looking at is implementing a before-and-after-school care program through Girls Inc. This used to exist at Lanesboro years ago. Girls Inc. did all the lift, all they did was use our space to have people here to support our families. And we are in the process of getting that off the ground now. And then we are going to build systems within our, within our school. So instead of waiting until they hit the seven days, you've already got a letter, reaching out after four absences, especially if there's four absences in the same month. Like, hey, what's going on? We, you know, we need you to be in school, how can we support being in school? We understand that students get sick, and we understand that families are hyper-vigilant right now with illness, symptoms, et cetera, et cetera. But focusing on getting, getting the students to school, building partnerships with caregivers to overcome roadblocks. Sometimes there is, you know, issues. If mom and dad have to get to work by eight and kids not up, they have grandma checking in, finding, finding out ways and systems that we can help those families that have a struggle getting kids to school and seeing what we can do to, you know, facilitate a conversation about the importance of attendance. And then lastly, continue to promote student connections. If you had that connection, students show up more often. So working to make sure every student feels like they have a place of thanks. Questions on goal two? I can't see everyone, so if you have one to speak up.
I've got a question, Nolan, apologies. I really appreciate the, the way you've laid out the improvement plan so far. And just curious about the, both for the first goal and the second goal. And maybe this is a question generally about, about process, about who will be reviewing the data that will help you determine whether you've, you know, had a successful outcome or not. Is that something that, this is sort of a general question, but how does that, how do you imagine that process playing out?
So we, so I, it's a great question, I should have started with that. So in March, when we met with the school council, we looked at our last school improvement plan. We said, hey, where did we miss? And there are things we missed. We talked a lot about sustainability and partnerships in our previous school plan, and that was not something, we had a little bit, we did some cool things, but not nearly enough is what we wanted to do. And the school council thought that that wasn't the direction that we needed to continue in with all the other pressing matters that we have. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, so I think it sounds like the, what will happen is that the, you'll undertake this improvement plan within this next academic year. By the end of that year, you and the school council will review the data to see how well, you know, the plan, we know how well the plan played out, is that, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Spot on.
Yeah.
Other questions on goal two? All right, seeing none, move on to goal three. Social-emotional wellness. I think we all know what happened over the past couple of years, had a big impact on our students. So to increase social-emotional learning, coping skills, and interaction with peers and adults. I think the, the biggest thing we saw this year was the maturity of students and the maturity of interactions with peers, being able to navigate sticky situations like a miscommunication in the game of tag. So what we're going to continue to do is work with Community Circle, which is hosted by our social worker. She goes to every classroom once a week. We're bringing in a new curriculum called Everyday Speech, which focuses on those conversations between peers and with adults. We're going to implement Zones of Regulation, and the teachers will have PD on this in the fall. If you're not familiar with Zones of Regulation, the idea of it is to help students recognize their emotions. Are they green, are they ready to go, are they blue, sad, yellow, they're escalated, red? All out, all out discomfort. And helping teachers and students implement the Zones of Regulation to recognize where they're at, and then give them the tools to come back to the green zone, to get back into education. And that will be professional development for, you know, we'll need professional development with that to make sure we're implementing it well. And lastly, we use the Panorama data that we're getting the, with next year to analyze how we're doing, right? Use the data we get from Panorama and My Sabers, which is part of our FastBridge benchmark system, to see, hey, we are implementing all this great stuff. Let's measure the impacts, let's take a pulse at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year, to see if the work we're doing is having an impact. Questions on goal three? All right, goal four. So this is our Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging goal. The first goal, someone up for you, is to utilize the DEIB director. Get whoever it is, when they're here, bring them in, get them involved in the school, utilize them with our faculty, with our students, with our support staff, their Lanesboro Town community, to, you know, work on everything that we need to work on. That's, that's the first big one. The second one is we, if you're not familiar with Lanesboro, every week or every morning, we have an announcement, and the entire week's focused on one cultural celebration from around the world. We've done things from Kwanzaa to, what was it, April? Just all of them, around solstice. Add to our announcements, make sure they're in-depth, and we keep them in tune with our student population. For instance, we had a three-minute announcement, and if you've ever been around a five-year-old in the morning, they can't pay attention for three minutes, so break them up, break them up throughout the day or throughout the mornings of the week, make sure they get the whole announcement. Increase attendance in our school-based groups that involve themes of DEIB. So we have a book club this year that's focused on DEIB themes. We have sixth-grade multicultural student union, we just went into every class and presented on kindness. And then we had a opportunity to work with the Greylock Multicultural Student Union after school, their students, grades fourth and six. So continue those opportunities and then increase, increase opportunities like that next year. D and E kind of go back to goal three, which is use community, so Circle had these conversations, and then use data to see how we're doing. Um, so I feel like I've been talking for a while, what questions do you have for me?
It all looks good, Nolan, it doesn't look like I see any questions.
All right, well, thank you.
Can I just ask a question, Nolan? Did you say that you have a multicultural student union at Lanesboro Elementary right now?
Yes, this. Go ahead.
Is that, sorry, is that new this year?
It is, yes, it is something that we started in the fall with grade six. And there was, it started, we did it at lunch on Tuesdays, it was a great little time to meet. We first talked about like what they saw, like what's happening in your school, what's happening in your lives? What, what do you want, how do you want to see this school change? What do you want to see this school change into? So then they narrowed down the topic, but just being kind, just being human. The first step, the first couple of weeks, they made posters that were hung up in the main, main street hallway forever in the building. And then the second chunk of the year, they focused on getting presentations, high-quality presentations ready. They went into the classrooms of their, their peers and their siblings and grades K through five, and they, they talked and said, hey, this is what you need to be, to be a Lanesboro student. It was a really cool program to run this year.
That sounds fabulous. Do you know, and Jake, this is more a question for you. Is there a similar program at Williamstown Elementary at this point?
Sorry, trying to unmute myself, there is not specifically this type of program at Williamstown Elementary right now.
Okay, thanks.
All right, seeing no questions, thank you for your time and have a fantastic evening.
Thank you so much. Okay, next up, we have Williamstown Elementary, so I will turn it over to Cindy Sheeby.
Hi, everybody, give me just a second and I'll go ahead and share my screen. Before we get started, just a couple of brief updates, just much like Nolan said, we are preparing for sixth-grade graduation, which is right around the corner. I do have to give our sixth graders a tremendous shout-out. They just completed a massive round of productions of Shrek the Musical, which was, if you've got to see any part of it, was nothing short of magic. Super grateful for everybody involved in that production, but also it's just, it always continues to amaze me what our children can do, and it was a pretty amazing sight. We're finishing up the year with field trips to Mass Moca and the Clark Art in a variety of different locations locally. And, you know, most of our kids are doing an incredible job trying to finish up the year and making good connections with people within the building. So we're, we're pretty excited about the end of the year. It's definitely a time when there are a lot of things happening, but we're grateful that we have the ability to do a lot of the things. We just had Field Day last Friday, and while Field Day sounds like an insignificant thing to many, it's the first Field Day we've had in two years, and our PE teacher, Ben Burdick, was able to curate a day-long event that went off really without a hitch. And so we're grateful that we're, we've been able to really bring back some of the more normal things, but also some of the really fun community-building activities throughout our school, allowing our families to participate. So pretty grateful about the last couple of weeks that have happened at our school. The school improvement plan that you see before you, you know, we've had a year where we have really truly put into place a lot of different things. Much like what Nolan said, you'll hear a lot of similar things, and I will continue to echo that one of, you know, Nolan and my greatest goals is to continue to work together to bridge gaps that may have existed between our two schools because ultimately we want to be providing our students with shared experiences. We want to be providing our staff with shared experiences through professional development as well. Goal one for us is to continue to create a respectful, inclusive school environment. This is really paramount to what we do at Williamstown Elementary School. We continue to grow in enrollment, and that's 57 new students just this year. I have nine brand-new first graders just enrolling for next year, so my enrollment is continuing to grow. And, you know, it's great to have new kids and new families, but we also want to make sure we're making those families feel welcome and feel engaged and part of what we do. And so that mission to continue to have a respectful school environment is something that's going to really truly be at the forefront of going into this 22-23 school year. In order to create that environment, you'll again hear similar things that you heard with Nolan. We're really going to continue to bolster those professional development opportunities for our staff. Our staff will continue, you know, to be engaged in Zones of Regulation training, but also universal design for learning. One of the things that we've really learned this year through the implementation of Wit and Wisdom is that, you know, we can put in, put different programs in place, but we also have to be mindful of how we're doing the instruction, how are we delivering it? Are we providing students with multiple ways to show what they know? Are we providing students different ways to express themselves? Are we providing a curriculum where we're trying to make an effort into students' different interests to make the learning meaningful to them? So that universal design for learning is something we want to provide to our staff. And also you'll see gender identity. We did a lot of work this year with someone with gender identity, and it was incredibly informative for our staff, being able to give people a shared experience on terminology, on experiences, on case studies, but ultimately to talk about, have conversations around gender identity was really helpful for our staff, and that's work that will continue through this next school year. The next one, we're going to continue to look at our curriculum and make sure that we have a diverse range of voices and experiences that are incorporated into our curriculum. You know, when we implemented Wit and Wisdom, that was a primary focus, but we're also looking at that concept across all different subject areas that will continue to be something that we look at through every piece of curriculum that we have for this next school year. Similarly, you'll notice review and expanding literature representing diverse people and cultures in classrooms in all grade levels. You know, we need to be mindful of what are we teaching, what are we using to teach, and do our students see themselves in the stories that we're reading, in the books that we're asking them to read themselves, but also in the curriculum that we're presenting. Next, you'll see defining and developing the role of our PTO and expanding the membership. That's something, you know, as I said, that's incredibly important to me as a growing school with really increased enrollment. We want our families to become, to feel welcomed. We will also want our families to become involved in participation, participation in different school events. So we will be looking to look at our PTO membership and similarly developing our roles and expanding members of our school council, wanting our school council to really take an active role. And what are the things that we can do to make sure that we are looking at resources in the community, that we are doing the best possible job to serve the children and the community within our town of Williamstown? Goal two is on curriculum and assessment. As Nolan spoke to earlier, we are going to continue to provide professional development for Wit and Wisdom. The staff learned a lot this year with Wit and Wisdom. I think anytime that you put in any kind of a new piece of curriculum into a school, there's definitely a learning curve. I know at Williamstown Elementary, it's been a significant number of years since we've had a program that ranged from kindergarten through sixth grade. So to be able to have the opportunity to put a program in place where there is the hope of foundational pieces, common programming, common language that builds from kindergarten through sixth grade is incredibly enticing, but it also comes with challenges of being able to support the staff that's delivering the instruction. It's really easy for me to give a program and say, we're going to do this, but it's just as valuable and just as critical that I'm providing the staff with the tools to be able to do it. And I think if there's one thing that we learned, we're going to really hopefully look at our different teacher leaders within the building to be supporting each other in a way that we didn't do this year. You'll notice that the next bullet being peer coaching to support the program implementation. One of the most valuable pieces that we can do in education is to be able to go into a classroom, to listen to our peers, to watch a peer teach a lesson. And that's something that this year, in the first year of implementation with Wit and Wisdom, we didn't really have the ability to do. But going forward into the 22-23 school year, we want to really be able to have our teachers go into different classrooms, see what their peers are doing, see what works well in the area of Wit and Wisdom, but also be able to generate those conversations. We had the ability for certain teachers in different places to try and make that work, but that will be a true goal across all grade levels going into this next school year. Next one is creating a system for grade-level reviews of lessons and student work. We were able this year to really put in designated grade-level meetings at each grade level. It gave staff the opportunity to have a time to meet together, to focus on planning, to focus on taking a look at data, whether it was with the reading specialist or the math interventionist, but really truly holding sacred a time at every single grade level is something that we want to make sure that we're continuing because it definitely proved as a valuable means of, you know, collaboration and collegiality, but it also gives myself and my assistant principal the ability to sit in on those meetings and have staff ask questions of us. Lastly, you'll see providing universal design for learning, as I mentioned before. Ultimately, we want all of our students to get what they need, no matter what that is, and that really starts with making sure that our tier-one instruction is the highest quality and the highest level of instruction that we can possibly provide for students. And in order for us to do that, we have to continue to make sure that we are providing our staff with the training and with the information that's necessary for them to continue to do that. And that, as I said, that will be a huge focus. And we're going to continue to look at FastBridge. We were able to implement FastBridge this year. Definitely had a lot of bumps along the way. I think it is going to be a good tool for us, but we are definitely going to be looking at providing professional development for our staff and making that, the data from FastBridge be something that we are able to look at, to examine, to really make sure that we are using it the way that it's designed. I will say, you know, this year, I think staff was, was a little bit shocked by implementing Wit and Wisdom and trying to do a FastBridge assessment system. Just anytime you try and do something new, people want to do it really well and want to be great at it. And so that FastBridge piece, while we completed the assessments as a school, we're really truly looking at what do we do with the data? We can give the assessment, but are we doing what we need to be doing with the data? And to that end, you know, we know with our kindergarten and first-grade students, in order to administer FastBridge, you really have to be sitting one-on-one with students. So our goal will be to create an assessment team based with people within my building, but also people in the district office, who will be able to gather together and come into the building to administer the assessment. It's one of the ways that not only allows us to ensure our students are getting that assessment, but it also provides, you know, a concrete assessment team that can go in and do the work and then allow us to, you know, work on the data and analyze it afterwards. You'll also notice implementing reflex and refrax math at grades 10. You'll also notice implementing Reflex and Refrax Math at grades two through six. It doesn't feel new, but one of the things we always notice is the importance of foundational math skills. Being able to have kids practice addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division is really, really important. Nolan had some teachers at his school who were able to use this program, as well as teachers in my building. And it's something we wanted to invest in, school-wide, to be able to give our students and our teachers access to another tool. That can help to benefit student learning in the area of math. The last goal is teaching all students and student support. I feel like I've, you know, repeated myself several times, but truly, we want to make sure that all of our students, no matter what the needs are within the building. Are getting what they need. And when we look at our students as a whole. We are coming up with a couple of different things that we really feel like are important for our kids. To be able to be successful, to feel confident, not just as learners, but as people within our community. We're looking to create a student support center. The student support center would be an area for students to go who are struggling to regulate emotions and behaviors. The reality is, many of our children need a minute during the day. Many of our children need a space that's calming and comfortable and safe. Where there's a friendly face, where there's a friendly adult, because they might be having some sort of an issue, no matter what it is. But when our students are in that frame of mind, they're not able to access curriculum. We have to be able to provide a space where our students can get that minute that they might need. Where they can, you know, if it means a walk, they can take a walk. If it means a conversation with a trusted adult, that we're going to be providing that. Because if there's anything that this year has taught us, it's that we really have to be mindful of what are we doing? We, we can give all the kids the curriculum that we want, but we have to make sure that our kids are able to access it. And one of the biggest ways they can access it is that we are also supporting their social emotional needs. Are we teaching them how to regulate behaviors? Are we helping with strategies? We have to be doing those two things hand in hand to be successful. And I am looking next year, we currently have one reading specialist. We will be breaking my reading specialist position. So that I'm going to have a specialist at the K through two level and a specialist at three through six. A couple major reasons for that. Number one, as I said, my population is growing. My enrollment is pretty big. And I want to make sure that we are able to support students who have any issues. If you have an issue with reading, I want to make sure that we have specialists within the building that can meet those needs. And you know, to that end, part of the goal there is to have our reading specialists be able to service students. But it also gives us the ability to have those reading specialists push into classrooms, which they're not currently able to do because there's not room in the schedule. But pushing into classrooms to support Witten Wisdom instruction. We don't have that ability now. And in, in order to break up, you know, the large population we have at the school, if we have a K through two specialist and a three through six. It will give us the ability to not only support students, but also support our staff in a different way that we haven't been able to prior to this. And the next one, expanding and enriching our math intervention across all grade levels. You know, we were fortunate enough to have a math intervention position. It just came at a really interesting time, right as we were going into the pandemic. So our math interventions hasn't really had the ability to fulfill the program like we would want to see it, you know, be run. She's trying to do a lot of amazing things with students, but what we're looking at is again, that lens of, are we providing? Not just remediation, not just foundational skills, but are we also providing the other end of the spectrum and doing enriching math activities as well? So we will be looking at that intervention program and looking, what, what are we doing across all grade levels? What are the gaps that we see to, again, that laser focus of wanting all kids to get what they need? The last couple, ensuring that students feel connected and a strong sense of community through social emotional curriculum. And support, including daily morning meetings. This probably to me is one of the most important on this entire school improvement plan. Having our kids feel connected, having our kids feel loved and supported. Is one of the most important things I think that we can do as a school. We're looking, as Nolan and I have both said, into implementing Zones of Regulation. And Zones of Regulation is one of those programs that's going to help us teach kids how to regulate feelings and their energy and sensory needs. But one of the, the greatest things about it is that idea of building community. And in Zones of Regulation, there's a daily morning meeting that should be implemented across all grade levels. Sounds really simple, but research has proven that one of the most powerful things that we can do for our children at the very start of the day. Is to have a check-in. How is everybody feeling? How did you come to school? What are things that are making you feel good? So that we, you know, at the very beginning of the day, have that pulse on the class and the children that are in front of us. And that's something that we are going to really hold dear as we go into this next school year. That idea of building relationships with all of our kids. So that we are making them feel supported and making it a nurturing community that they get to come to every single day. The last one, the SEL components of FastBridge to support students, which we did not use this year. And again, it goes back to, we have, we're using FastBridge. We want to make sure we are using the components of that program to the best of our ability. We want to see if when we use that SEL component, what kinds of information will it give us? What will the data show? It's just another way that we can continue to make sure that we're supporting students and getting another data point. And as I said, ultimately, you know, we always look for different tools. And this SEL component of FastBridge is available to us, and I want us to be trying to use that for this next school year. So while a lot of different pieces, truly. We're looking forward to really truly making sure we're meeting the needs of all the kids in our building. And meeting the needs of the teachers who are standing in front of those students to deliver, whether it's instruction, whether it's social emotional support. That we are able to truly make sure that we are providing every level of support to everyone who is going to be working with our kids. Questions? Sorry, I know that was really fast. Jose?
Thank you, Cindy. And I'm going to speak very briefly as a parent and say thank you so much to you. And Travis for your incredible leadership during these past two years. I can only pray that we have the both of you leading our school for many years to come. Shall we say, I'll just do a little prayer?
Thank you.
And I wanted to speak to the, the goals for increasing participation within the PTO and the school council. Could you speak briefly to, you know, anyone who might be listening or who might be tuning in later? Just exactly what, what do the PTO and the school council, what do they do and how do they support your work? And if anyone was interested in joining the PTO or school council, who, who should they get in touch with?
Great question. So I would say first and foremost, I think I'm the easiest one to get in touch with just because people can readily access my email and call school. But our PTO does have a Facebook page where you can access a PTO website as well. What I would say to anyone who is new to our community, or even if you're not new to our community. The most rewarding piece of my job is getting to involve as many people into the kids' lives as I possibly can. When we put out, you know, information for Field Day this year, and it was asking for volunteers. I don't want us to be a school where we say, hey, I only need ten volunteers. I want us to be a school that says, hey, if you want to be here, and if you want to help, and if you want to volunteer, I want you here. And whatever that capacity might look like, that's incredibly important. The PTO, as far as their role, there's a lot of fundraising, but the PTO supports a million things in our school. They run the book fairs. They support Field Day. When we do author study and, you know, we did Walk for West, we do Words Are Wonderful. The PTO is kind of, sometimes the, the quiet voices who are doing the organizing and making things happen behind the scene. And I truly, I, I couldn't do any of the programming, programming that I've done this year without the assistance of our PTO. And again, it's that parent and teacher organization. It's our parents being able to volunteer and saying like, hey, I've got this great idea. What do you think? But also our teachers saying, oh, I have this project I want to do. How can we help? And how can we, you know, work together and do partnerships with our parents and our teachers in our community to make experiences happen for our kids? We are continuing to develop the PTO. We're really truly looking next year at saying, you know, hey, we have these ten school activities. And put those school activities out to our entire community. And seeing like, hey, where do you think you might have an area that you're interested in? Or do you have a brand-new idea? Being new to my position, I want to make sure that we are always looking and listening. And implementing things that we may not have always done before. It's important to me that we're supporting new ideas and supporting things that maybe we've never done. I would, any day of the week, rather, rather try it and fail than not try something. And that's something, you know, the lens of the community, I want all hands on deck, and I want as many people as I can possibly get. Because it truly only helps the children, and it only helps the staff in the building. Similarly, the school council, you know, the school council looks, you know, what do we need in the building? They meet with me once a month. They help to develop the school improvement plan. They look at, you know, how can we use resources within the community to make instruction better? How can we use resources in the community to make social emotional learning different? One of the greatest things is being able to have members of the community in this school council say, hey, I know somebody who does this incredible talk. On diversity and inclusion. Could we have them come in? Hey, I know somebody who knows this incredible author. And it's a way that we are able to really take a look and broaden our horizons, so to speak. So that you have many voices, not just myself, not just teachers, not just parents, but also members of the greater Williamstown community. Who have different perspectives. There could be nothing more valuable in an elementary school setting. Than to have a lot of different perspectives of people doing different jobs, having an input into what we do on a daily basis. I'm always laser focused. I've been a teacher for twenty years. And so sometimes I only see certain sides of things. And it's valuable for me as a school leader to hear different perspectives. It's valuable for me to have those conversations once a month. And say, what can we do differently? What can we do better? What are our strengths and where do we need to grow? Because if we're not constantly being reflective in all of those areas, we're not doing it right.
Thank you.
Julia?
Thanks. I've, two questions. The first one I think is brief. So we heard from Nolan about the use of Panorama. And it looks like you're measuring, or you have some goals that are similar around SEL and student engagement and that sense of belonging. And I, I guess I'm interested in why you aren't using Panorama, or what, you know, what the difference, why the difference?
I think for us, we are trying, brutal honesty is dipping our toe. FastBridge is something that we have readily accessible to us, and so we want to go ahead and make sure that we are using what's in front of us. Without trying to give another thing to staff to do. I also want to really make sure that I don't want to start using tools. And then we do all this social emotional work with data. And let's say we have a myriad of students who have different issues or concerns that come out of that, then what? We have to be prepared, prepared for the then what? What kind of level of support are we going to provide for those students? So for us, we felt like it was important for us to use that tool within FastBridge first.
Okay, okay. So that, that actually, thank you for that. Kind of leads me to my next question. I want to echo what Jose said around the, and, and this was true, I thought, for Nolan's as well, just how comprehensive these school improvement plans are. I'm, I, maybe if you could scroll up a little. I'm, I'm wondering, I think this is the first one, yeah. I'm wondering, when I look at the measurable outcomes. I think of the importance of having measurable outcomes because you, you're able then to say. I, you know, we achieved as much as we wanted to, or we didn't achieve as much as we wanted to. And to be able to then go back and say, if we didn't, what could we change? And so I'm often confused by some measurable outcomes that are like, well, we talked about it. It was on the agenda and we had people sign in. So I, I don't know like how we know then that teachers are changing their behavior. Or teachers are learning from that. And so I, I guess I, at some level, want to encourage thinking about different types of measurable outcomes. That can demonstrate teachers are changing their behavior, rather than, you know, they heard, all right? You know this as a teacher, right? You teach it, doesn't mean kids learn it, right? So you as a teacher have to reteach in a different way. And I name that because I'm, I'm in general, like, there's so many activities here. So many activities. And how do you know where to put your energy? How do you know where the biggest gaps are after you've tried all these things and where you invest the most energy? And I think that's why I'm like focused on that measurable outcomes column.
Right. And, and Julia, to answer in the most honest way possible that I can. I will tell you that this is a hundred percent a draft, and we, and we are not done with measurable outcomes. That's the brutal honest truth of it. We love the activities, the timeline, but that measurable outcome is just as important to me, and this piece is not done for us. I'd love to be able to say, oh, we're, this is it, but it's not, because that's the piece. I can provide professional development. I can provide curriculum. I can make people go to the things, and I can have everybody involved, but it doesn't tell me. What I'm actually gaining and am I measuring that? So that entire column has a lot of work to be done before the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Thank you. I get it. I, I mean, I get it. So just wanted to make sure that that's still in process. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much, Cindy. Okay, so next up is Mount Greylock Regional School, and so I will turn it over to Jake Schutz.
Great, thank you. Everybody, good evening. There we are. So we have five goals to share tonight. First goal. Is our social emotional goal. We have the same goal, same objective. The activities are more concise and more focused, much because of why Julia. Julia's last point mentioned. To Cindy, because where we found our, no, well, not, not for this one, Julia, but for many of the other ones. That's why our, our goals are similar and our activities have been shifted. But for this one, this has been a natural, the activities have been adjusted. It's more of a natural progression. Because of, we added the social workers. And now, based off of the progression of introducing the social workers. And the, in their curriculum into the, into the classroom. And adding those, those hours, the instructional hours and the time on learning. It's not actual time on learning, but the direct instruction of SEW with the social workers. With students. The first activity here was. Coming up with specific groups. And we do that right now. But we do it in a very informal way in the high school. We have a lunch bunch, and it's, it's very ad hoc. We do it formally in the middle school and, in our enrichment classes. But this is a way to get some curriculum and make that more, more structured. And it's a goal that will, that can ebb and flow and help us become more responsive, more efficient. And more proactive in the same time as far as what our student needs are. So if. For example, if we find that all of a sudden, we have students who, many of them are experiencing loss. We might need a group around, you know, grieving and students experiencing loss. But anyways, that's, that's the first, the first activity. Second activity, we have gaggle therapy. Gaggle therapy is a teletherapy. It's something we've had for a while. We bought it, or we, we purchased into it when. Covid first hit when we, and we also had teletherapy. With a social worker, a, a local social worker. And we still have this teletherapy subscription left, like hours left. And we don't really use it too much. And we don't really use it too much because we really like the teletherapy with the, the local provider that we have. And it really works. And the, the need. Has gone down. It's still there, but the need has, has gone down. And before we just forget about that, or that goes away. Because in the, the chaos of what, what goes on in a social worker's life and a counseling office. It's easy to sort of forget about that subscription, you know, think of a, you know, how many subscriptions you have to, to various things. That's kind of what this is. So we wanted to put it out there and make that a priority, like this is a tool, this is a resource. So we wanted to put it out there and make that a priority. Like this is a tool, this is a resource. Um, and we want to make sure that we're, we're using it right and If, if we need to retrain ourselves or reteach ourselves or um, trade it in for something else. We, we can, we can do whatever we need to do and make a, make an informed decision.
I think, Jake, sorry to interrupt. I think you might be sharing the wrong tab.
What are you looking at my email?
No, I'm looking at, I think last year's plan and only a little corner of it. And I see there's a tab. Cause you're, you're talking about important stuff that's not reflected on the screen at all.
That's great. There's my email. Your screen sharing is paused. Stop screen share. There's everybody. All right, let's try one more time.
Julia, the correct one is in our packet. The viewing audience is not seeing the correct one, yeah.
Thanks, Julia. Let's see. All right. I got rid of everything else on my screen. How about now? Cool. Thanks. What would be worse? Be saying the wrong thing and having the right thing up there? I don't know, but I appreciate it. So that's gaggle therapy and that's why that's up there. And the third activity there is Including um, our DEIB principles. So one of the, one of the goals of our DE, DEIB goal Is to make sure every goal has a DEIB lens. Where and when applicable. Um, so um, that's our, our third activity here. Any questions on this before I move on? And we can always go back. So I'll just keep going. And if anyone wants to call back to anything else, just holler because I can only see two folks. Goal number two, here's our data goal, data goal. This is the one that really relates to As far as Julie was mentioned, um, being able to focus our energy at. And this is something that we hope and are planning next year to be able to structure Uh, administratively in, in the building to be able to Strategically Address these activities because they are important. And we discussed this at the council quite a bit. It would be great to have a data coordinator, somebody whose work this is to make that happen. To, so if we know that if all the other goals, the, the data we are collecting is the right data and we are reading it the right way. To make sure that the needle is going in the right direction. We discussed, we just take this, do we just take this off of there? Because we, it really did not get the effort Um, and the energy that it deserved. Um, and not for a lack of Effort, just for a lack of, you know, there's a finite amount of time and energy that, that people have and you have to focus that On, on priorities and you need to, to triage. But nonetheless, it's, um, we decided to keep it on there as one of our goals because it's, it is important. And we, so we left the activities the same. There has been progress on these activities, but certainly, um, none of them have been completed. The one we've made the most progress on has been the, um, the dashboard. And we, we started that Beginning of last year and that is, that would likely be the, the major outcome Of our, uh, of this, uh, the major product or tool, um, from this goal. So hearing nothing. I'm gonna scroll on down to the next one. Academic goals. And here are the, um, the objective and goals are the same. And actually I see a typo right here because the dates were not changed in the objectives. But with adjustment, adjustments to the activities. Specifically with the addition of the math interventionists and re Reprogramming Some of the, the, we're reworking of the program of studies, re Deploying staff in the, in the English department. And being more strategic as far as how and where we schedule Students and teachers based on student needs is, is hopefully going to be able to Connect the students with the biggest needs In the smallest classes with the most amount of support being with the mo- most, um, with teachers and The most pair professionals. So we, we did add, um, and an FTE And a teacher as far as scheduling goes, we were able to reconfigure some The way we schedule some Homework support classes using the interventionist. So that's, that's all good things as far as being able to connect, um, English teachers with students who need Support and literacy skills. And there was one other thing I wanted to point out on goal three. But I do not recall. I'm going for Oh, I, I think, um, just mentioning that we're, we're also going to be excited. We're looking at activity D to include the DEIB coordinator To, to help us when we do, we have the ongoing review of curriculum and material. But just to add that with a fresh lens, um, coming from a, uh, somebody who's that, is that is their specific goal. So although we, we do it, the curriculum leaders do it, school council does, does do that. And we hear feedback from students. We're all coming from Various perspectives, whereas that DEIB coordinator will be coming from that, that singles perspective. And so we're, we're just excited for that to happen. Now that is a great segue in the goal four, which is not here. Goal four is our DEIB goal. Our DEIB goal was not finished, so the council, um, did not want to present the committee with a Subpar goal. Um, so we cut it off of here and our intention is to, um, we set up another meeting. And at the end of next, the end of next week, the week following graduation and, um, Our students, even though they have graduated, they're going to come back and join, uh, join our meeting and finish Our DEIB goal and then we'll get it on your next agenda if it's, if it's okay with Committee. So that, that will be our goal number four. There, there have been and will be plenty of changes to that. Otherwise it would just be on here. Goal number five, again, the goal and the objective Are verbatim, the activities have been adjusted. Did take some notes for this one to make sure I got it right. Uh, so first, if we look down the, for the three activities, we see Evaluate, identify and explore, um, the three activities we want to do. We want to evaluate the current program. We, we want to evaluate our staff. And we also want to look at our, our sister staffs at both elementary schools. We want to look at our equipment. We want to look at the equipment at our sister school, our sister schools. You know, whatever, whatever, what are our students coming up with? What Equipment, what instruments have they been using? Are they used to? What curriculum have they been playing? Have they been taught? Um, what are our standards? What standards, what other standards are out there? And if you read, it's the, um, I'm talking, you know, the mass core standards for graduation. Is that something we want to adopt? So far we have not. Then identify, we do have great relation, this is moving down to B. We have amazing relationships With community partners. And some of them are very formal, some of them are very informal. We want to memorialize that and And capture that. To make, to A, make people aware of what we have and what we do and Also to be able to remind ourselves of, you know, our, our resources in the community. If, if there are ever any stale times, you know, or if we have any writer's block per se. We have, we have a menu of, of go-to for support because oftentimes in the arts, it's, um, It's, it's been easy to feel, especially coming out of covid. When, I mean, they, they took a real big hit not being able to be together and perform and they've felt very isolated. So we're taking all the steps we can to really connect, connect them to other, other performers. Um, in the next to expl- uh, explore, how do we connect them? How do we build those relationships and expand? How do we increase, uh, increase and expand the voices? To include Uh, voices from within the school. You know, there's, that could be students who, we want to get students in the band chorus orchestra room Who have never played before, an eighth grader, a ninth grader, a 10th grader who have, who's never picked up an instrument To come in and sing, to come in and start fresh on a performance. Those are the things we want to start to see happen, not just, you know, we just, we don't want it to be something where, well, if you didn't start in fifth grade. Playing something and come right through, you need to be, um, you know, you don't jump in and start playing. So those are, those are some of the things we want to start to try to, um, explore ways to make happen, whether it be labs. Or other things like that. Let's see, and that is goal five. So I think that may have been rushed. I know Cindy said she was talking a lot. I feel like I didn't talk that much. Any questions? Anything but about goal four?
It looks like Carrie has her hand up, Jake. I don't know if you can see her.
Okay, yes ma'am.
Thanks Jake. Um, so on goal five, um, you You talk about evaluating and assessing the current programming. Have you or has the council talked with Lindsay, who's our co-curricular coordinator and the various directors of the arts program was about How that might happen and are they Involved in like, are they on board with, um, the conversations that have been going on in school council?
Yeah, they're, they're totally on board. So there's, there's been no specific conversation of like, this is how the evalu- This is the type of value, type of evaluation. This is how it's going to happen. It's more of a like, let's take stock of what's going on. Let's take inventory. And, and yes, and so, and they're more than, more than willing to throw open the doors. And they're actually, they're, I mean, they're asking for help and assistance. I mean, so it's, it's amazing. If, if you don't know Patrick and, oh my God. Patrick and
Jackie.
Make Jake, why I'm a Jackie. Jackie, oh my God. And so Jackie just sent me an email. They had, she had her, um, uh, little baby girl. Yeah. So Good thing this isn't live, but Jackie, I hope you don't watch this and saw that I forgot your name for Thirty seconds. But they are so energetic and just, just amazing. They've been doing outreach to, to both elementary schools, bringing, um, bringing our, our middle school Uh, performance down, or performers down there, going down there on their, on their preps. To collaborate with the music teachers down there. To recruit, to, to actually start doing what we're talking about doing in here already. So they've, they've really kind of laid the framework and we're trying to, so we're sort of like following in their footsteps To help lay the formal foundation to do it more, um, programmatically, systematically. And to help them kind of do it, do it on a, on a bigger scale to kind of help support them. Yep.
I see. Thank you.
I hope that answers your question, Carrie.
Yep, thank you. Thank.
Jake, I'm looking for other hands. I don't see any yet.
Just, just a shout out. If any school committee member would like to, um, come to graduation, please shoot Me an email and we will reserve you a seat. It starts at 11 AM sharp this Saturday.
Thanks Jake.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions for Jake before we move on? Hey, thank you very much. Next up on our agenda is the finance subcommittee report. Um, so I'm going to turn it over to Carrie Green.
All right, um, and Joe isn't able to be with us this evening, so I'll do my best. And I think Jake can also Jump in. The first item on the agenda is the MacRae Lock Track and Field OPM selection update. I'm not sure why this doesn't have A vote on it. I don't know if that's a problem, Jake.
I think the vote just got pushed down the line.
Oh, no, that's a different vote. That's a different vote.
Oh, you're right. You're right. Oh my gosh.
Was this in? Shoot. Well, I don't know what the real rules are around this. We, we fully anticipated a vote here. Because we do have a An agreement or a proposal that has been already, um, Recommended just 15 minutes before this committee, the finance committee met. And reviewed the proposal, which I believe has been emailed to you. It's not the actual contract, but it is The terms that we are agreeing to. Joe has looked it over. Jake has looked it over. The finance committee has looked it over. As I said, we did vote to recommend it, so it is a Motion on the floor of the school committee. So I'm hoping that we can go ahead and vote it tonight because we would like to go ahead and Sign a contract with, um, the firm that we're recommending. So as I said, it's, go ahead, Steve.
I was going to say, um, I was just going to suggest that we proceed, but we also put this on the next meeting.
So I, I, from a process perspective, I just confirmed as I went back to our notes. I think we had agreed in our last meeting that the finance committee could approve it. That the finance committee could approve it. So that's in our, what's in our minutes. So that's why, I'm assuming that's why there was no vote. That was my.
Oh, the finance committee could approve it in full?
It, in our minutes that we approved earlier this evening, consensus to have the finance subcommittee review and approve at its June second meeting. A contract negotiated by Bergeron.
Wow, so the finance committee should have just voted. To approve it rather than. Alright, we can, we, alright, we're gonna have to sort this out. This is just, uh, that's our bad, um. Hmm. Well, in any case, we've come to an agreement, um, with the OPM and. Um, the OPM that we are negotiating our contract with is Skanska, as we talked about at the last meeting. They had, um, presented us with a, um. Number higher than what we were hoping for and, um, they were interested in doing a little bit more reporting. Than what we were looking for, so. Um, Joe went back to them and we, what we did is we created, um, some options for additional work if it. If it is necessary. So, um, at this point, we have, um, I think, um, an agreement to move forward. And we're just gonna have to, I guess, reconvene the finance subcommittee. Um, to take a full vote on that rather than a recommendation to the school committee. So I guess I should have read the minutes earlier. Um, sorry about that. Alright, well, the next item, so that's all good news. The OPM is in place and we're really looking forward to, uh, working with. Skanska and again, thank you to both to Skanska and Colliers for applying, um, for. Uh, for to, for putting in proposals on this job. The next item on the agenda, which, um. Again, this may just be my faulty memory, but, um. My memories seem to indicate that the vote that was taken, which I should have read more carefully. Um, was for the OPM process and that it may not have extended to the designer process. So we want to just jump into the designer process now. But we need to know how, so the designer is the architect, right? To the designer is going to draw up the plans, is going to. Go through some different options, um, is going to, um, potentially. Uh, present options that community members may want to weigh in on, um. So. In order to hire the designer, we need to do a similar process that we did with the OPM. We need to put out a request for services and then. Um, go through a hiring process. So is it the committee's desire to delegate that? To the finance subcommittee as well? And is it the committee's desire, and these might be two separate things, we don't have to vote on the whole thing. But is it also the, just for our information, the committee's desire to just have the finance committee? Take this and, and run with it essentially to really see this project through to the end. Um, to keep the school committee, um, up to date, to come back to the school committee as the finance committee sees. Um, fit, i- if there are decisions that need to be made that the finance committee doesn't feel comfortable with. We will come to the school committee. But are there any, I guess what I'm asking is, are there decisions that? Would be made and I can't really give you examples. It might be, well, I can, uh, six, six lane track versus an eight lane track. Right? So we would be soliciting community input. We would be working with the OPM to, um, potentially, um. Have, I'm not sure, we haven't talked about community forums, but we would certainly advertise that this was on the agenda. Are those the kinds of decisions that you are ready to delegate to the finance subcommittee or do you want? Uh, conversation or even votes on the school committee level? That is a separate discussion though, from the designer selection, right? That's beyond the designer selection. So. Yeah, Jose?
No, thank you Carrie. I thank you and, uh, and the finance subcommittee for, you know, again, for the heavy lifting that has, has gone on in every. Every stage of this. Um, speaking to the question that you posed to us, I think I, I, I. I am, have some concern about, um. Leaning too heavily on the finance subcommittee for, for these efforts. Um, so I'd love to hear some feedback from you as the chairperson about, um. Whether you, you see in addition to, you know, the, the. Very frequent responsibilities your subcommittee has, um, if this is something that your subcommittee. Is, is happy and willing and able to continue supporting. And then in addition, uh, speaking to the process. It would be great to hear how, if the finance subcommittee is going to continue to take the lead. On, you know, the development of, of this project, or at least on, on this side of the project. Um, how, uh, we will lean on our in-house experts, you know, I'm thinking about our athletic director. Track and field coach and, and like, um, and perhaps, um, you know, seeking out, uh, advice. And maybe, you know, consulting from, from, from experts who can help guide the project.
Absolutely. Um, Joe isn't here to speak to this, but we have talked about, you know, um. Making sure that we have the right people at the table when we are having conversations. Or, um, having Joe talk with them because their schedules may not meet, you know, may. It may not be possible for coaches or athletic directors to come to a four o'clock meeting for Joe to make sure. To have those consultations with the people who are key to making this project successful. And that would be the coaches, the athletic director, Rob Winok, um, our operations. Director and, you know, various other people who are on staff, um, at the school. And of course, Joe is, is key to this as well as Jake. So, yeah, the finance committee is the, the. Political body here, but we're not the experts, um. And, uh, one thing I would say to respond to the first part. Of the que- the first question is, you know, w- when we met Ursula wasn't able to join us. How did the game come out Ursula?
Um, not good. We lost fifteen to zero. Not at the end of the.
Sorry.
Also, since you asked Carrie, I just would like to re- let the record show that I joined at six forty one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Um, so Ursula wasn't able to be at the finance subcommittee meeting, but Steve, uh, pointed out that. Um, when the phase two subcommittee, which was originally charged with. This part of the, over this part, this project, the field project, when they dissolved or were disbanded. The finance committee was given responsibility for the project, um, by the school committee. And, um. From Steve's perspective and, and my own perspective. We are fine continuing that, um, if that is the will of the school committee. Ursula, if you want to weigh in on that now, and it looks like Steve, uh, wants to weigh in as well. And then Julia, I do see your hand up, but I just wanted to respond to Jose's questions.
Go ahead, you add your hand up, so I'll, I'll speak up.
Uh, what I was going to just say briefly is I agree with everything Carrie has said. One thing that's very nice about the finance subcommittee is we have standing meetings every two weeks. So we will be able to constantly stay up on this. If there's anything big that's going on, we'll be there. And can always, of course, bring those back to the school committee, but it's nice that we have a structured set of meetings already on the books. Thanks.
Yeah, I was just gonna say something similar, Steve, which is that I feel like at our standing meetings, we would be discussing probably. All of these same topics anyway, so I don't think it really adds. Anymore. You know, time than we're already spending on this, so I would have no problem being the body to, to do the vote if necessary, you know, rather than. Bringing it to the school committee if everyone else is comfortable with that. Because we're always talking about this topic in our subcommittee meetings anyway, so. Um, that's fine with me too.
Okay.
Thank you Carrie.
Uh, Julia, oh yeah, thanks Jose. Good question.
So I think I'm still responding to your original question, Carrie, um. I, in general, am a real big fan of delegating to committees or to the experts to do the work. Um, and so my inclination is to say absolutely, but the, you know, the finance committee should hold on to this and thank you all for agreeing to do that. One of my questions is, how do we ensure we don't repeat? Any of the. Um. A- a- anything that could. I, I feel like the phase two subcommittee, you know, the kind of. Discussion that ensued following phase two subcommittee happened in part because. People didn't know what they didn't know. Um, and in part because I don't think people understood I, that something would be a bigger issue than it was. And so I, I don't, I want the finance committee to own this, but I also, um. You know, don't want to put you in the position of having to try to think through all the different perspectives or views that. If you brought something to the full committee, you might hear. And so I'm just like struggling with that balance. Um, I also appreciate the political, this is more of the political side, if you will. Um, and I'm absolutely heartened. You're really just talking about all the internal people who know what there's, you know, understand this a lot more. So anyway, I, I name that, um.
No, it's a really good question, Julia, and I think the main difference between, um. The process of the phase two subcommittee and the process that we have going forward is that we'll have an OPM that we're working with. And the OPM, you know, is the project manager, is our project manager, right? So is the expert representing us. Guiding us through the designer selection process, guiding us through the various options that are going to be put before us. Um, they have experience with, um, doing this in other communities. And know where the red flags are and also know where the issues are that we really need to solicit. Greater input. So I think if we didn't have an OPM, I might have a little trepidation, but since we're about to sign on with one who is. Um, incredibly experienced and has expertise to bring to the table. I have confidence that we can shepherd this, um, without too much. Um, problem. Yeah. Steve, you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, just to briefly add, we've been having these discussions for years and even though we have had. Lots of meetings with everything posted and whatnot. It wasn't until right before we started going out, that certain members of the community became. You know, really aware of what was being considered and had concerns. And so the phase two committee then paused, let everybody have its say, and we spent a lot of time listening to the community. So I think the biggest difference between where we are now and where we are then. Is that the community has had a couple of years to really make itself heard. And the school committee has had time to gather the additional data. I, I don't think we're going to have as polarizing choices going forward. As the ones we've already looked at. To date. So I'm, I'm not really. You know, as worried. I, I think the people who are concerned about what's going on have been paying attention and are aware of the discussions and where things are. I don't think that was necessarily the case in the beginning, and when that was discovered, we did, you know, pause and give people a chance. To make themselves heard. So, thank you.
Thanks Steve. Um, Jose, if you don't mind waiting just a sec, Christina has her hand up. Christina?
I can wait for Jose. He had his hand up first.
I know, but he's already had a chance to ask a question or two, so.
Um, I just wanted to, um, I, I really appreciated Jose's question and the, and the follow-up con- conversation. Cause I did, I, I had inquired of Carrie if this would be too heavy of a lift for the finance committee, given what's already on their plate. Um, one of the things I think that is great about, um. Virtual meetings for all the things that are not great, is we do have the ability to. Record the meetings and look back at them and get draft minutes a lot faster than we have been able to in the past. Um, and that's been really helpful for the committee as a whole to be able to take a look at those draft minutes. Um, so we can catch things faster than, um, maybe we were able to in the past. And because the finance committee meets so regularly, we're also getting that information back. Um, and they've been so great about sharing things when they have been, um, maybe a little polarizing or maybe a little more tricky. Then, you know, the, the average. Not incidental decisions they're making, but, um, that might be greater than, than usual. So I would be really comfortable with, with this process.
Thanks Christina, that's a good point. Jose?
Apologies, thank you Carrie. Um, and warm hand here, too many buttons there. This is a two-part question following on from, uh, Christina's question or, or comment. Um, because there's a vote scheduled here. Uh, and I, you know, it's, it sounds like we're reaching consensus around, uh, finance subcommittee. Um, taking the charge of, um. Leading the field and track designer. Process, but I'm having trouble articulating in my mind what a motion mi- might sound like. Um, what are we, you know, what are we voting on in particular? Um, so maybe, maybe that's the first question, the first question, and I'll wait to ask the second one until, until I can, or we all can hear a response to that.
Right, so initially, um, the, the vote would be to delegate. The Mount Grail log regional school field and track designer RFS process to the finance subcommittee. Um, but it sounds like it's not just that process. If, we can start there, um, and then maybe. Expand that to, um, the designer process. As well, yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how you would expand that, um. We could just start there and then.
Yeah, so this, I think. You said something Carrie that really, uh, sounded great to me. Um. If we were to move something, it would be to move. The delegation of the field and track designer process to the finance subcommittee. Selection process, it sounds like. Is that right?
Yep.
Uh, I'm not sure if we're ready to make a motion on that. I'm happy to move it. I'm hesitant, I'm looking at Christina.
No, I, go ahead and move it and then somebody can second it. If we need to continue a discussion, we can do that.
Okay. I'd like to move that we, as a full committee, as a school committee, um, delegate. The responsibility of, uh, of the field and, and track designer. Process to the finance subcommittee. I think that sounded a bit maybe more vague than it needs to, than it should be, but.
Designer selection process.
Selection process, thank you.
Sure, okay, Jose has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Curtis, second. Any discussion?
Yes, so this is the second part of the question now that we've moved this. Um, so Carrie, then it, as this moves forward on the designer selection process, um, the. The school committee can expect the finance subcommittee to report back to us at our regularly scheduled monthly meetings with an update. Um, the school committee will not be a part of the selection process, but the finance subcommittee will report. Back to us. Both the details of the process and the result of the process. Is that correct?
Great.
Thanks.
Yes, we will absolutely keep you updated by sharing minutes and by reporting at the meetings and. One thing that, um, we're putting on the, um, OPM. Document is that, I don't know if you noticed that it says right now that they were, uh, report, uh, or. Attend the school building committee meetings. We don't have a school building committee thankfully anymore. Um, so we're changing that to the finance subcommittee, um. And school committee as needed. So the, the main reporting or meeting, um, would be the finance subcommittee. But the finance subcommittee might. would be the finance Subcommittee, but the finance Subcommittee might say, hey, you know, this seems like something that really should go to the full school committee, because honestly, the full school committee gets more play than the finance Subcommittee. And if we have something that we really want public input on, community input on, we might want to bring it to the full school committee. So that we have.
Right, but passing this motion, we're effectively delegating not just the selection process, but the many aspects of the process. It could be that we, the finance Subcommittee reaches a point or a point where they'd like the full committee to be participating in the discussion and selection. But if we make the motion, we leave that with the finance to decide.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion questions?
So this vote is just on the designer selection process. It's not on the full trajectory of the project. I think that would have to come with a different.
And we could, we could do that later, right, Carrie, since
Yeah.
there's, there's, things have to happen before we even really get to that point.
There is plenty of time. Yes, yes. And you can also, yeah. I'll leave at that. Jose, did you have another question?
It's just, I, I, I think because there's something nagging at me, and I, I, I'm curious about how, imagining that the members of the full committee, that are not members of the, the finance Subcommittee, if they were interested in the process, not necessarily, well, not participating, but at least attending these meetings, that would the finance Subcommittee be, be open to that? And then what's the best way for members of the full committee to provide feedback or input to the process? And they won't be, they
Okay.
will be formal.
Yeah, really good, really, really good questions, very helpful. So the school committee members are members of the public, right? You can attend Subcommittee meetings as members of the public, but you probably shouldn't speak at the meetings. All right? If you have feedback to give, then you can provide that to Joe. And that way, we're not violating any kind of open meeting law. You you can view meetings, we can record them regularly while we're meeting virtually. And you can view the meetings afterward as well, if that's helpful. I don't know how long we're allowed to meet virtually. I don't know if we have any updates on that.
No updates on that. I will maybe call one of our state representatives or senator tomorrow and see where, where, if anything, that's happening. But I think mid-July is, my memory serves, is when that wraps up.
Yes, and it's likely, it's most definitely going to be an agenda item on our July regular session meeting.
Right.
It's
So if some
is the extension.
Yeah, I mean, we do still have the ability to tape meetings and share them with the committee, even if we're meeting in person. So, and I, I think if there were anything, yeah, I just can't ima, I mean, we should really focus on the designer selection process. It'll be, again, very similar to the OPM process. And right now, it's just a matter of getting the request for services out on the street. And that is something that the OPM is going to help us to do. So by delegating it to the finance Subcommittee, it will, it will keep it moving also. We'll be able to do it as, as soon as possible, I would think.
Okay, hold on, Steve, your hands up.
Yes, just building on what Carrie said, we've had this in the past with school committee members attending Subcommittee meetings. And we have to be very careful not to have a quorum of people present. So one possibility is if there is an issue that the finance Subcommittee is going to be looking at, that you want to have an active conversation about, is to just have a joint meeting of the finance Subcommittee and the school committee.
Right, but is it that we can't have a quorum present, or we can't have a quorum deliberating?
I think it's deliberation.
Yeah, I think members can attend a meeting if they don't speak. That's really the key.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah, if they don't speak and they don't speak with members after the meeting either, right? So the communication has to go through Joe, right, and, or Jake, in, in order for us to avoid any kind of, or have joint meetings. The joint meetings are always an option. That is just harder to schedule and it might slow things down. But if it looks like we need school committee input, we're going to bring it to the full committee. We're going to request a special meeting. We're going to try to get it on to a school committee regular agenda. You know, I think we've been pretty mindful of that, you know, up until now. Jose? You're muted.
Thanks, sorry. Thanks, Carrie. This is the last you'll, you'll hear from me on this motion. But I'm, I think I'm bringing back some of Julia's concerns that were raised at our last meeting. And I think, Carrie, I think you have convinced me that this is a way forward, at least on this part of the process. But in my mind, I keep, there's a worry about the school committee, the full committee, not, not doing due diligence and not providing proper oversight and accountability of the process. And I'm wondering why we wouldn't have a process that's akin to, you know, for instance, what the policy and governance Subcommittee does, which is to make a motion at the Subcommittee level that then gets brought forward to the full committee and only needs to be seconded with discussion. It sounds like the reason why we wouldn't do that is to take advantage, you know, to improve the timeliness and efficiency of the process. And it, it sounds like that would be the only reason why we wouldn't go to, 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 to that, to that, you know, moving to the full committee model. Is that, is that right?
And also to, I think that's part of it, and part of it is just to consolidate the discussion to, to one committee, rather than having the discussion in finance Subcommittee and then taking up airtime at the school committee again. So if you want to have discussion in both committees, then you wouldn't delegate, you know, decision-making to the finance Subcommittee. You would just have the finance Subcommittee continue to make recommendations to the school committee. And then we end up repeating the conversation in the full committee.
I'm, I'm looking at Julia here. If Julia looks happy, I'm going to be happy.
I, I think, oh. Go ahead, Carrie. I was just going to say, the solution for oversight that Julia recommended was to delegate it to the finance Subcommittee. Right, that, that was having the school committee involved. Because we were originally talking about the business manager just negotiating the contract. And Julia's recommendation was to have the finance Subcommittee involved in that. So this was just extending that that model.
And just, and it is just on this part of the process, so there'll be times.
Yes, it is. Yeah, at this point, it is, we would have further discussion. Steve?
So along these lines, I think if it's a really big controversial polarizing, if something like that comes up, I think the finance committee would come to the full school committee. To me, I look at this as, this is one of the reasons why we regionalized, so that district administration does not spend all of its time going to multiple copies of the same meeting. And to have long discussions at the finance Subcommittee and then have them again at the full committee level, you know, I'm, I'm always aware of how much time, you know, Joe and Jake spend on everything. And so I'm a little hesitant to have minor discussions repeated. And I think we have a, you know, a good sense of the committee and communities feel on the project, that I think for most things, the finance Subcommittee, I think, understands the will of the committee. There'll be periodic reports everywhere, anyway, so I think this is a good path moving forward.
Jose?
I just said I lied. I think, I think I still have some worry. I think for now, I feel good, but moving forward, I do wonder about, wonder about situations in which you know, votes go to one on the finance Subcommittee, where there's a member of the school committee who's in disagreement about the process. That for me, see, worries me. And it would speak to perhaps the need for the full committee to be included in the discussion. But once the vote to one vote is made, it's effectively passed by the finance Subcommittee and, and, and we move on in the process. So I think, I think, I think there's some details about moving forward that I certainly would like us to discuss as we go towards next steps. Yeah, that's, that's a concern for me.
Are you saying that you have concerns about the finance Subcommittee overseeing this next step, the, the designer selection, or are you talking about beyond that?
Um, I, I apologize, Carrie. Yeah, I think
That's okay, because we're only talking about this next step.
Exactly, yeah, no, I think, I think I'm at a point, I think it's even speaks, I think it speaks to every step of the process.
Every step.
Yeah, but I, but I, but, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with where we are to take on that risk as a full committee, imagining that, you know, we may be in a situation where there's a split in the finance Subcommittee vote, a disagreement, for instance, in terms of a way forward. You know, I think I'd like us to, to think about what that reflects and what that might need, you know, in terms of how to make the best decision. I, I'm at the point where I, I, I could, you know, imagine that that's very unlikely at this stage of the process. So I feel, I feel comfortable about, about this moving forward. But as we, as we move forward in terms of developing a model for how we make decisions, it's something that I'd like us to, to consider.
Julia?
Um, thank you, Jose, for really kind of digging in here, because I do think we have to manage our whole committee oversight with our efficiency. And that is a, a difficult line. And I am comfortable, especially with the OPM involved, that that's a different, you know, that's very different than the last time this, you know, quasi setup was in place. But I also was reminded, or what, what Jose said triggered for me, that there was some concern about who the la, I think it was the last architect, that they had a bias towards doing things a certain way. And I don't, I don't know, and I don't know enough about all of that, but it is the kind of thing that could get us into, again, not knowing what we don't know space. And so I guess, I am, I feel comfortable on this next step, that the finance committee is aware of all of the, like, potential challenges from the community, and you have the OPM. And if you do end up feeling like you're going to have a split vote, then I guess I would just ask you bring that to the committee. And, and, but otherwise, I think I'm good with the finance committee taking this on. Does that make sense?
Steve?
Yeah, I was going to just say something similar. I mean, I'm fine with the finance Subcommittee taking this on. Most of our votes have been three zero or two zero. You could always put something in, say that any unanimous vote of the finance Subcommittee meeting goes forward, or just say you need at least, you know, eighty percent support for someone to pass. You would have to decide, how do you view an abstention or an absence versus, you know, is it? Anyways, I don't want to make it too complicated, even though as a mathematician, I love the possibilities. It's really what people are comfortable with. I think at this point, we've had enough conversations that I think we all know what is the project we've agreed to do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. And Jose, I, I would just like to point out that I do know that when they have, when the finance Subcommittee has come forward with any votes, they're always very clear about what that vote looked like, if it was a two-one, if it was unanimous, if it was two with somebody missing. So I would fully expect them to continue operating in that way. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion from Jose that was seconded by Curtis. All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conrey, I.
Konstantin, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Loy, I.
I don't remember the pause that time. Miller, I.
Thank you, that motion passes unanimously.
I'm sorry, Christina, just, just to follow up on the, Jake, do you want to talk about the finance Subcommittee reconvening for
Yeah. If, if we posted a meeting tomorrow, we could meet, I, I would suggest Monday. Saturday is a big-ish day for a couple of you. One of you on the finance Subcommittee. So I would suggest Monday. It, it sounds like, Steve, you may struggle with a four o'clock meeting. Is there, I would suggest this meeting could be five to 10 minutes. Is there a time of day that would work best for us to, to put that at?
That's the day my summer students are coming in, they're coming in all throughout the day. So Monday is going to be a very busy day. Whatever time the finance committee meeting is, I will just excuse myself for a few minutes.
Okay, thank you, Steve, for that flexibility. Carrie and Ursula, four o'clock?
That's fine.
Okay. We, we will get that posted tomorrow then. Apologies for, for, for missing that through through, through the haze. So thank you all for, for being willing to do that.
Thank you. Carrie, are you all set?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. The next agenda item is Policy Subcommittee, so I will turn that over to Jose.
Thank you, Christina. We have several items on the agenda from the Pilot Policy and Governance Subcommittee. There are three votes that are scheduled regarding policies that we all had, the, the, we provided or offered or a first read on at our previous school committee meeting. And then there are two others that we, we are offering or providing first reads for. Jake, would you like to speak very briefly about the policies that we're scheduled to vote on? There were some feedback or was some feedback that we were provided by our district legal consultants. I just wanted to know if you, if you'd like to speak to, to some of that feedback.
Yeah, I just, we, we sent as a Policy and Governance Subcommittee, I believe, three questions and clarifications off to to Attorney Roach, who is a part of the Dupre Legal Firm on, on the policies that actually we, we had the, we had the questions and the responses back, and I think they maybe were included in the packet. Last time, we included them again this time. I was mostly just trying to understand, why does it say this and not this? What does that mean? And that, that is, once again, in the packet for you to look at or to have looked at. And, and so we, we have Policy AC, which is non-discrimination, which includes harassment and retaliation. And, and so we, we have policy AC, which is non-discrimination, which includes harassment and retaliation. For a second read, policy ACAB with the sexual harassment policy for a second read. We have policy JIC harassment of students policy for a second read. And, and then not to jump ahead too much, the policy ACAB, the sexual harassment policy. That's a policy that essentially applies to really anybody in the school community, from students to volunteers. To vendors, to delivery people, to folks doing work in the building. To yourselves as, as public servants connected to the school district. The policy that we will look at for a first read is very specific, the sexual harassment around employees. And what we owe as, as ethical, law-abiding employers to our employees. Just in case there was any. Confusion about why there, there's a second read for one set of sexual harassment. Examinations and then a first read for another set.
Thank you, Jake. Any questions or, or comments in response to what we heard from Jake?
Jose, I don't remember where, did we, did we move these?
We did not, no. We did not.
No, I mean, on the, in the policy committee. Did we move these? I think we did. So they're already. Moved on the floor of the school committee. And so they just require a second. The ones that are a second read just require a second and then a vote. And then the first read, we also moved. To the floor, but there's no votes there.
Julia, that's, I can't recall in our notes from our last meeting. Do you have them in front of you, just to make sure we're, we're, we're following the right steps?
I am. Looking. We did not.
Okay.
So I think because of the agenda items that we had in front of us to discuss. And given time constraints around our meeting, we did not have these three policies that have been presented as second reads. Or being offered as second reads. They weren't on, we did not have them on our agenda to, to move to the full committee. So.
So do you want a motion for the three together or do you want to do each separate?
I'd like to do them each separately, just to give folks an opportunity if they'd like to make any specific comments and discussions around each policy. So if I could, because it requires it. Would someone like to make a motion regarding approving policy AC? Non, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation?
So moved.
Christina moved and seconded by Julia. Any discussion on this, on this motion? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. And we were experimenting with different ways of, of voting, Christina, but I'll give the numbers, well. We'll keep it alphabetical.
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Konstantin, I.
Elfin, bye, and I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Miller, I.
Right, the vote, the motion has been unanimously. Passed by the full committee on policy AC. Would someone like to move policy ACAB, approval of policy ACAB on sexual, the sexual harassment policy?
So moved.
And Julie seconds. Any discussion?
I have a, I have a general question. Jake, how do these go into our online policies? Do we send them back to the MASC and they upload them?
Yes.
So how?
And that's a very quick process. Stacy sends them to the MASC and it's a very fast turnaround.
Okay, so these should be included in our policies by next week.
Yes.
Cool.
Yep. Good question. Thank you for that.
Any other questions or, or comments? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote, alphabetical order.
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Konstantin, I.
Elfin, bye, and I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Miller, I.
All right, the motion to approve policy ACAB has passed. Now we're on to policy JIK. On harassment of, the harassment of students policy. Would someone like to move the approval of policy JIK?
So moved.
Christina moves.
Second.
Julia seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll roll call vote on this as well. Alphabetical order.
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Konstantin, I.
Elfin, bye, and I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Miller, I.
All right, the motion to approve policy JIK. The harassment of students policy has passed. And now we offer as a subcommittee. Two first reads that the subcommittee has unanimously, unanimously moved to the full committee for, for first reads. The first is on policy ACAB dash R, the sexual harassment policy for sexual harassment against employees. You heard briefly from Jake about what this policy is meant to do. For shorter policies, we would literally provide a first read. But these have all been provided to you in the meeting packet. Any discussion or questions or concerns regarding? This policy? Hearing none and seeing none, we will remind. Public that the, the policy and governance subcommittee welcomes feedback and comments on, on this particular first read. Or this particular policy. And, and they can provide those directly to probably, probably most efficiently Stacy, I would imagine. Is that right, Jake? Right? All right. Thank you very much all. So we will move on to the first read for policy IJ. O A, the field trips policy, which the subcommittee unanimously, unanimously moved to the full committee for a first read. And this policy. To be fair, there was some discussion on this policy and it looks like we will have a bit more. So Steve, Stephen.
I just wanted to state for the record for the people listening at home, that the full documents are available on the district's homepage. Under the meeting documents for this meeting. I just wanted to confirm that they're all there.
Thank you, Stephen. Yeah, they should be, they should be there. Thank you.
Yep, because I know sometimes we read them all. You know, word for word, which is very time consuming. And just confirming that your people can just go to the district's page and look.
This, yeah, thank you. This is very useful. This particular policy is short enough that we, we could. Read it. But I think we've, we've developed some momentum behind us. But that's certainly there. Julia?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm with the momentum. I wanted to just, you referenced that there had been some discussion about this policy. And I wanted to just share some of my thoughts about that and then ask a question. So for those who weren't in our meeting, the, one of the things that we really were looking at. That I was in particular very interested in understanding is why. The clause, except those required for student participation in tournament competitions or contests. Was in this policy for the out of state day trips and excursions in the late night overnight trips. Because of course, we want the same degree of safety insured for whatever trip our kids go on. And it was shared and, and it was shared that there is a different, those also have an approval type of process. But it is different because it is often, has to be on a different timeline. Because we don't always know when students are going to, are, are able to attempt, you know, qualify for a competition. And I want to name that in particular because I am. Coming out of Courtney Tunis' report in the fall, in which she said that there is a bias for athletes in the school. I think I was particularly attuned. To seeing something that could feel or seem like a bias for athletes. And I just wanted us to all be conscious of ensuring that all the rules apply to all the students. You know, and we don't have special circumstances. So I say all that, in our meeting, Carrie had shared, I thought. A particular policy about travel for athletics. And I probably just misremembered that because I know Jake has included two cross-references. Neither of which really addressed travel for athletics. And Carrie, I'm wondering.
Yeah, I'll see if I can find it again.
Okay, I searched, I searched in our travel. In our policy handbook and I couldn't find it, but it would be great if we could have that cross-referenced in here as well.
I think from what I remember, Julia, I think it is this policy JJIB. And I think. And it could be something that we could consider either as a full committee or a subcommittee. You know, that last paragraph, and I'll read it out loud for everyone, just in case they don't have it in front of them. It says that the school committee is aware that team participation in athletic contests by members of the student body. Requires that, in quotes, away games be scheduled. It also recognizes that there is a need to regulate certain aspects of student participation in such contests. And I think by such contests, they're referring to these away games. Therefore, the superintendent will establish regulations to ensure the safety and well-being of students. And staff members who participate in these activities. And again, it's implicit. But my read of it is that these activities refer to the away games. So it sounds like as, in my reading of the policy, again, it's, it's having to. Read between the lines in some ways. My, my reading of it is that the responsibility falls on the superintendent. To ensure the safety and well-being of our students and staff during, during these away games. Or our competitions that are away from, from, from campus. Is that, is that correct, Jake? Is that your reading or understanding of how we?
That is our reading. And that was, that's included, like, there's an updated in the packet. There's an updated version of this policy that I think is a Google Doc that does include that cross-reference and then another cross-reference. And, you know, we, we could certainly have Lindsay come in and talk about the way that we do that. It starts to become, you know, it's, it's a little hard to tell. We haven't had many opportunities since COVID is common in. And, and continues, but. There are lots of considerations that go into how students do get to athletic events. And we've, we've said no to some that have been. Because the, the safety just didn't feel there, the appropriateness just didn't feel there, the liability protection. You know, the safety for kids is first and foremost, but the liability of the district is, is also a consideration. We, we have said no. Certain aspects. So I, I do. It, it, it does though, it, it is a fair point that Julia makes that, you know, everything else really has an approval process. Athletics, I think because of the regular nature of the travel, that it happens a dozen times in a given season. You know, for a sport like basketball that has a hefty game schedule. That it, it, it doesn't have a free pass, it does get consideration, it's just through a different looking process than one that comes up.
And it sounds like. The distinction is that. Non-athletic field trips that are late night or overnight require. Formal and advanced approval by the principal superintendent and the school committee. Whereas athletic competitions that might involve both late night and perhaps overnight trips. At the moment with policy JGB, as it's written, that only requires your approval.
That is true. Yes.
Yeah. And Julia. I, the, the concerns you raise resonate with me. It sounds like there may be an opportunity for us to revisit policy JGB and maybe make more explicit. You know, our, our expectations of how this process should play out. But does this discussion in any way alleviate some of the concerns that you, you have and that you raised today?
Yeah, I think if we can agree, we will revisit policy JGB and, and ensure the parallel nature of, of these two. You know, understanding that the context, but the parallel nature there. I would be, I'm fine.
Yeah, we, we just want to be thoughtful. You know, it's, it's interesting. We posted three tournament, state tournament games here today, baseball, softball and lacrosse. I, I don't know what it's going to look like for baseball, but lacrosse right now could be playing on Friday, they could be playing on Sunday. And, and I am not certain of where the sites are. There are, there are times in athletic world, particularly in the spring. When you get up against schools ending and stuff really shutting down that. I, I would want to make sure no matter how we move forward with this particular piece. We, we don't unduly inconvenience the school committee by having to. Yeah, this is a remarkably flexible committee and set of subcommittees for sort of on the, on the spur of the moment meetings. Anyway, but, but we want to be careful not to abuse that as we move forward. But it, but it's all very important to take into consideration. I found this to be a very helpful conversation. Going back to our original meeting and into tonight. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jake, and thank you, Julia, for raising this. It, it, it. Reminds me of the earlier conversation we had today regarding, you know, the importance of being timely and efficient in decision-making. And, and that does mean quite a bit of responsibility falls on our superintendent's shoulders. At least with regard to, to this, to this matter. Any, any other? Points for discussion or questions or concerns that anyone would like to raise? All right, hearing none, seeing none. I will reiterate what Stephen had, had mentioned. That this policy and all the policies that are under consideration are on, are publicly available as a part of our meeting packet. And we welcome feedback. Thank you very much. Back to you, Christina.
Thank you, Jose. Next up on the agenda is the business administrator report, and I'm going to turn it over to Jake.
Yeah, thank you. We only have, really, Joe had one item that we needed to deal with tonight. And it's a line item transfer authority. So as we, as we look to the end of our fiscal year, which is coming up in about three and a half weeks. We do need to have our books balanced at the end of the year. And we do that by transferring money where necessary from one line item or set of line items to another. And sometimes that does include like taking money from one cost center and putting it in an entirely different cost center. There are school districts that delegate this to their administration. There are school districts that have the school committee go line by line by line with every transfer. We, we felt like. As far as I can see and going back through old agendas from, from the last couple of years. I'm not sure that this activity was in front of the school committee at all necessarily, understandably during a pandemic. But we felt like the, the best balance perhaps would be to, and I hate to say this. To once again make use of our very capable finance subcommittee. And, and so Christina has, Christina, I think you have the language for a motion. That grants the authority to approve line item transfers as we close out the year. To the finance subcommittee.
I do. And I would like to make a motion to grant the finance subcommittee the authority to approve light item transfers. Required to close the 2022 fiscal year.
I'll second that.
Carrie seconds. Discussion.
I'll simply say. I'll simply say thank you to the finance committee. If you're willing to take that on, thank you.
This is, this is, this is important work because it's important that the the budget be, you know, we we should reflect where we're actually spending the money. It also helps us to build the budget for the following year in a more accurate way. And it's also important that it be done before the books are closed out for the fiscal year. So another reason it's helpful that the committee, the subcommittee meets every two weeks, we can do it into over the course of two meetings.
Great, awesome. Thank you, Carrie. Any other discussion on that motion? Did we even Steve? Oh, no, he's down there. He's a phone now.
No, I had to switch to my phone because I have to drive back from gymnastics.
Gotcha. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an eye.
Green, I.
Loy, I.
Milla, I.
Thank you, Steve. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Nothing else for business administrator report. So the next up on the agenda is superintendent report. Jake, it says you have approximately 15 minutes.
I am hyper aware that I am standing between going back to enjoy your families and or dinner. So I I this is not on the agenda and I know it's eating out of my 15 minutes, but the Lanesboro Elementary School Joint Musical Concert that featured orchestra, band and chorus with with the Hancock Elementary School was absolutely brilliant. It was also absolutely packed and absolutely hot for silicon. The test of that, but it was amazing to see a packed auditorium full of people celebrating children and their hard work and their artistry. And then on Friday had the incredible pleasure, again, a packed room and a warm room with my daughter of watching Shrek at Williamstown Elementary School and that's see how how one person manages to get basically the entire sixth grade to create something of of that level of excellence where the kids were clearly enjoying every second of it. Just remarkable. I don't know if she went to West Point once upon a time and that's where she got these abilities, but it was magical and my my friend Parker, who is a sixth grader, reminded me yesterday that next year I need to plan on attending both Friday and Saturday because he was a little disappointed that I did not get to see both both full casts of the show, so duly noted on my calendar and it was just a complete treat. And want to wish all, thank you to all of our spring athletes, just some incredible seasons and some surprising seasons. Lacrosse teams moving on, the baseball teams moving on, the softball team is not moving on, but we just had an incredible season and and I will say there were some volunteers from the community, people associated with the softball team today who joined our own staff to get the field ready to play. It was a massive endeavor for for two good hearted, dedicated volunteers. After last night's rain, the field was a mess. And when I came in early this morning, Brandon was out blow drying the field with the leaf blower. And I know for a fact they use shop vacs, so they were they were blowing the field, they were sucking water up from the field, they're putting field dry down. And 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 I know that our our athletes gave their very best efforts and very proud of all of these kids. And thank them for for sharing their time and their talents with us. Also want to just say a word. I've been as an administrator, part of a formal part of high school graduation since 1999. And I coordinated several graduations for my school in Virginia prior to that. Every single year since I've been like 26 or 27, I think to myself, there could not possibly be a better group of graduates than the cheerleaders graduates. And every year for the last over 20 years, I continue to say that and just keep climbing up the ladder of just being absolutely blown away by the quality of the young people that are public schools. And in this case, particularly Mount Greylock is through a partnership with among the family, the community and the schools. What a remarkable group of young people are moving out into the world and if you're ever feeling pessimistic about the state of the world, come and spend some time with your high school seniors or with your kindergarteners or with anybody in between and see that we are doing our part to send people out into the world that will do a better job on lots of things than than the generations before them. And this 22 graduating class is just sparkling in that regard, and I cannot wait to see them appropriately celebrated on Saturday. I I want to thank some of the people who have done the work with those kids over the years to our retirees for this year. We have several retirees who are sort of picking up mid year with folks that left at the middle of the year. We've celebrated some along the way and we're not going to repeat that, but but we want to wish all of the following people incredibly well. Bev Mocelli retired in January out of the guidance office. Staggering the number of college letters that that Bev must have produced over the years. I suspect she will dream about writing college application letters until she's about 95, when it's maybe finally exercised from her system. And so we wish Bev all the best for a well deserved, very happy retirement. Gail Scheckman was our English language learner teacher who retired in early April. Gail was with us only for five and a half years, but she's been an educator, a music educator, a special educator, and then retold to become an ELL teacher recently. Gail Gail went between or among all three of our schools and and then did some administrative work on top of that and simply a remarkable amount of energy and love and creativity expended by Gail and we wish Gail all of the best in in her retirement. Nancy Botessi is a paraprofessional from Williamstown Elementary. She's in the side by side program along with another retiree that I'll be mentioning next. Nancy has been with us for almost 22 years. I don't know how many of you know Nancy personally. I have known her for two years now and I've literally never seen her without a smile on her face. It's and it's like if you think about who do you want teaching our preschool children? Who do you want supporting them and caring for them and supervising them and partnering with Sherry to bring those kids along? My brain will forever picture Nancy, so a very happy retirement to Nancy. That dynamic duo of Nancy and Sherry. They could go out and teach the rest of the world how to do this work. And I think Sherry probably has over her three decades. And Sherry too is retiring after almost 33 years. And I suspect her her days moving forward will be filled with literal chocolate sweetness because her family are candy makers up in Bennington. She has experienced a lot of sweetness, both on the give and take over the last 33 years of really creating side by side and being a an absolute leader, not only in in this, in her school, in the school district, in the Berkshires, but really across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And so a very, very happy retirement to Sherry. Margot Sanger has been a music teacher at Williamstown Elementary for nearly 17 years. Again, Margot is somebody I I have gotten to know through not only our work together, but through our our shared trait of being Episcopalians here in Berkshire County. So Margot has been training and working very hard to be a lay minister. And so her her path before her as as she retires from one type of service, moving into serving the the Western Mass Diocese as as a clergy member is very excited and we're very excited for Margot. I know that Jackie Vanette, our current music teacher here counts Margot among her 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 biggest mentors and brightest guiding lights. And so thank you, Margot, not only for teaching children, but for inspiring adults as well. And then finally, someone who is a teacher at Mount Greylock Regional School. I suspect that she's has me in age by a few years. And I suspect that only because she's retiring and I'm not, but I wish that I had her energy. Sue Strizzi is a science teacher. I spent some time in Sue's classroom not too long ago, watching her students create water powered mechanisms and wa- watching somebody that knows how to teach hands on science, teach hands on science and get 13 and 14 year olds to understand that in science, a a failure for your machine to work as planned is completely far from failure. Because science is about trying something, going back and trying something else. And it was so impressive to watch and I'm hoping to join Sue on the 15th for a pun study with some Williams College folks here on campus. And Sue has been has been teaching here for nearly 21 years. And so we wish this remarkable group of educators all of the best. We thank them for years and years, decades and decades of 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 serving children and serving communities and making the world a better place through through their chosen field, being public school educators. Jose, did I see your hand up?
That was meant to be the applause emoji. Sorry.
Okay, well, you know, administratively, the day after meetings, we always say if anybody can come up with a question on any topic. Jose, so I I so, but but yeah, I think we all, I think we all join join you in applauding these folks and wishing them well, letting them all know that they will be missed and that the lessons they taught their children are lessons that lasted. The lessons they taught us adults, including this person who has known them probably less than than almost everybody else. Those lessons are not missed either. We wish them all the best and thank them. A brief wellness committee update, our wellness committee has had one meeting. They are fully constituted. I would like to thank Christina. Christina is the chair of the school committee, isn't really on any subcommittees, but she did get drafted into the wellness committee, which comprised of community members and teachers. Tammy Jennings, our food services director is on there. And they have already broken into two subcommittees and a nutrition subcommittee and a physical education subcommittee. And Nolan is leading them, Nolan Pratt, and is very excited to be moving forward. And we have some work that we need them to do in order to to get all set with the school nutrition services, but we're very excited about the work that both the work that they need to do and the work that they they envision for themselves moving forward as they can inform our our policy and governance subcommittee. We want to give you a a brief update on the D E I B director position. We are continuing to build the first round interview team. We are struggling to lock down some dates and that's just internally among it's it's just hard to do that. We are internally continuing to build our question bank that we want to query out folks about. We also have are are getting some some outside consultancy from from a group that's comprised of folks from both of our member towns who are also going to be giving us some questions to consider. As of this evening, we have 16 applicants for this position. You know, from from various parts of the country, from from locally to not so local at all and perhaps an international candidate. So we will keep you updated on that as we move forward. You could see just a little glimpse through the school improvement plans this evening. How how that that individual that comes in to do that work is going to join a team that is really ready, eager and anxious for that individual to be a member of our team. And then finally, I will give you a really short walk through a lengthy process. I'm I'm just letting you know because it's it's how we like to operate with transparency. Jake Schutz and I were going through his his staff require or his requests from students for for courses and classes. And we we did find one area in particularly that 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 I was concerned. We were, we were actually overstaffed for for the the need for teaching periods in order to to serve our students well. And so Jake, as every good principal should do, agreed that 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 was not the best use of resources, but absolutely was not wanting to give up the position unless that was absolutely necessary. And so we discussed what are some ways that we could really make more of of if we had a position? What are some needs that we have and looking at data, looking through from from some conversations with folks? The the thing that we landed on was sort of a a two pronged position. The the number and the complexity of of 504 plans that are coming up from the elementary schools into the high schools very legitimately, there's there's a greater number and they are very complex. Section 504 is a part of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And the the that that really is a an individual, an IEP is a plan that addresses learning needs that are presented by some students. So 504 plan is really related to other types of challenges that students may have from, you know, I I had one of my children was is essentially deaf on on one side or very hard of hearing on one side of his head, and so he had a 504 plan from the time he was in kindergarten. ADHD is something that falls under a 504 plan. There are sometimes short time 504 plans that address, you know, surgeries that happen or 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 a student can't write because they've broken their arm or broken their wrist. And so part of this position is a is somebody to help really oversee and coordinate the whole 504 planning project process and delivery process. The other piece of this that that I I saw is a real need is and the this position, just let me be clear, is a Magia position. It's it's a unit position within the teacher's unit. I felt we needed somebody other than the principal and the assistant principal who was really focusing in on our 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 junior high students, our seventh and eighth graders. That transition from sixth grade to seventh grade is a key key transition. You know that as parents. The transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, even though it happens in the same school and and it may look from afar as though it's perfectly organic. The seventh and eighth grade is not just a miniature high school. It's not just a younger version of high school. When we look at our discipline data, we I think there's a a a very disproportionate amount of discipline that's getting dealt with out of the middle school compared to the number, you know, the the proportion of the the total student body they are. And that's not terribly surprising. There are students that are that are in a developmental phase where they are trying to figure out themselves with the same fervor they're trying to figure out others. However, I think having, we think having However, I think having, we think having a position that is really putting a lot of focus into developing relationships with those students, making sure that discipline is not just consequences, but that it's a relationship, that it is restitution based and that it is, that, that discipline is used as a growth opportunity, not just a crime and punishment opportunity. And that those students need every ounce of reach out to home as third and fourth graders do, to, to, to continue to build partnerships with, with families, with caretakers, with guardians. And so we, we are offering this as a pilot position. We're kind of feverishly putting together the job description. But it strikes me, we, we wanted an individual to focus on DEIB. I think over at Mount Greylock, we need a person to focus really exclusively on the youngest members of that community. It's, it's an amazing opportunity to work with the DEIB director to really consider how we wrap up the second half of sixth grade in Lanesboro and in Williamstown, but do some activities together where we're coordinating for our students and bringing them together so that when they hit the front doors of Mount Greylock, they are proud Lanesboro graduates, they are proud Williamstown graduates. But most importantly, they are, they are a proud seventh grade class of the Mount Greylock Regional School. And so, you know, we, we see this position as budget neutral, but, but we're very excited about the promise and possibility of this position. See Julia and Jose hands up?
Thank you for all of those updates. I, there's so much there. I did just want to comment on the dean position with two other thoughts. One is I have heard from parents over the years of the need for something like this. And so I just want to underscore that, that they, and I know the teams in the seventh and eighth grade, at least my memory is that they work hard to, you know, to be kind of more in a team environment, but that's still, it's just a lot. And so I think having this dean position makes a ton of sense. The other thing is there is history. There was a period of time where there was a middle school principal and a high school principal. And, and so, and I know organization chart changes all the time everywhere, but like there's history of this need as well. So I just want to underscore.
Thank you for, for both of those. Yeah, we really, that, that notion of having two principals, I think can we, we really, we looked at several variations on this theme and felt like, like this is the one that research would suggest that, that, that we, we think holds the most promise and, and we promise to keep an eye on it and keep the data. And if it's not doing what we needed to do to, to look for something else. Jose?
Thank you, Jake. And yes, speaking to, you know, this, this dean position. As a parent of a rising seventh grader, as a dad, and someone who has struggles with helicopter parenting impulses, it's great to have another pair of eyes and that's with that aside, you took us through the sort of the big picture. Big picture, I think, doesn't do it justice, but the, the real need for this position or the utility for this position at, at, at the middle school level. In the details, where, where are we? We, it sounds like we have someone in position who is willing. And, and you know, could you, could you take us through how close we are to filling this position? And how, and speak to any conversations that we might've had with, with MAGEA, given that this is a, a position that will sit within the union?
Sure, that's a, that's a great question. And where we are is that we have posted it. And, and we have agreed that this needs to be a position that, that stays within the unit. It is not inconceivable that, that I think with, with splitting these, you know, being the, the, the head relationship officer for our seventh and eighth graders and among the people that, that, that work with and support those seventh and eighth graders and some work in 504 world, I'm not thinking this person will have time to teach a class. But hypothetically, in that they are remaining in the teachers' union. If in the future, we were to look at some other variation of how they spend their time, they could potentially also teach a class. And that could be a traditional academic class. It could also be a very specialized. Here's how to be a successful, here's how to be successful in seventh grade and beyond, until you, until you turn the page and move on. So in, in terms of where we are, that's where we are. We, we have an initial okay from MAGEA. We will be working with them on the job description to make sure that nothing in that description colors outside of the lines that, that unions traditionally and very appropriately like, like to stay in with, with their unit members. And, and, and so we can, we can update you on this as it moves forward, but it's, but it's really something that we started looking at when the, when the course requests came back and the guidance office folks or the counseling office did their wizard, wizardry with figuring out how much of, how, of what sections did we need?
Thank you, Jake, and thank you to Jake Schutz as well for, for getting this going.
Yeah. That is, that's all I have. I, no idea if I stayed within 15 minutes, you know, I go into a verbal fog. So Christina is giving me a sad no nod. So I, but thank you for your time. It's all very important stuff.
Thank you, Jake. I think Curtis was timing your, he'll, he'll give you back the report on, on whether you stayed within the limits. Thank you very much for all of that. Um, next up is the school committee chair update. I've prepared a 45 minute presentation for you. Not really. Um, all I really wanted to say is tonight I'm going to be sending the school committee a survey that we discussed about the school committee norms back at our January retreat. So I'm going to send that out and ask that you fill out that survey as soon as possible, just because when you get the email, if you can fill it out, you're more likely to, to complete it. So I would appreciate if you would do that and then we will discuss it in the future. And that's really all I have. So any questions on that? Good pregnant pause or good? Okay, moving on to upcoming meetings. I'm going to mention the one meeting that's not in the packet first, which is the one that was established at the beginning of this meeting, which is Monday, June 13th at 4:00 PM. There's a currently one agenda finance special, finance subcommittee special meeting. And that's Monday, June 13th. June 14th at 7:00 PM is the Williamstown annual town meeting at Mount Greylock Regional School. And that's in the gymnasium, I believe. June 16th at 4:00 PM is another finance subcommittee meeting. June 30th at 4:00 PM is a finance subcommittee meeting. June 14th at 4:00 PM, there's a finance subcommittee meeting. We love the finance subcommittee. July 14th at 6:00 PM is our regular session, school committee meeting. July 20th at 5:00 PM is our policy and governance subcommittee meeting. And July 28th at 4:00 PM is another finance subcommittee meeting. So those
Christina, there's one you're missing, which is graduation, the most important meeting of all.
I, I haven't forgotten it. I'm just avoiding it.
The 11th at 11. I like that.
The 11th on 11, the class of 2022 is graduating. It's very exciting. Carrie and I both have seniors who are graduating, so it's an extra special year for us. It's always special. I absolutely adore the graduation, but this one is definitely extra special. Okay, um, I do not have any other items up for just for discussion. Any agenda requests? Steve?
Well, I was also wondering if I could bring something up under the 24 hours. So this is concerning what our policy should be for students playing athletic sports with positive COVID tests, because we've received a lot of emails as school committee members about this today. And I thought that was worth discussing.
Uh, does anyone else feel that that's worthy of discussion this evening? Jose?
Just, I, I wonder if this could be an opportunity for Jake to speak to this issue and, and, and whatever way you feel comfortable, Jake?
Sure, our, our, our policy and our practice has been for all after school activities. We, students needed to be a part of the pool testing program. It, it went for drama, for the musical, it went for the play, The Lion, the Witch and the Wardrobe, which was a couple of weeks ago. So it, it, it was inclusive of students that were choosing to be at school for after school activities sponsored by the school. I, I think the, at, at this point, I, I do not know how many other schools in Berkshire County require poll testing for those levels of extracurriculars. So, you know, I had emails today, a couple, just really from one or two people that, that suggest, well, we had the prom and we didn't force kids to test. We are going to have graduation. We didn't force kids to test. There's, there's, I get that. Athletics. Arguably, there's, there's more opportunity for more exchange of, of, of toxins than, than there are. It's simply, you know, we, we are very clear that if a student is COVID positive, they should not be playing. I think many other districts are depending on families to report that. We continued through requiring full testing. We have two teams that are going to continue play either later this week or early next week. We have one more round of pool testing, which will occur on Tuesday for our athletes at this point, because the other after school activities are over. So, you know, if, if the committee no longer sees the, the logic or the necessity of that, I think we absolutely stick with the notion that people who are positive should quarantine and they may not participate in athletics. If the committee wishes to, to, to suggest to me or tell me that we need to not require poll testing for athletes anymore. That's, that's, I, I will do what the committee tells me to do in that regard. I, I still would maintain, however, that you know, it, it breaks my heart that a student is missing a playoff game. It's hard to see a team have to rally around a, a missing player, perhaps a key player. However, there's another school that is represented on that athletic field or on that athletic court. There are families that are represented. I will say I heard from directly to me from two families today, or perhaps one, one family, but two members of that family. And, and I did have direct contact with the family of the student that was indeed missing the game and had a good conversation with, with that, that, that student's father. So I think if the committee wishes to take this up, you can, and you can direct me a certain way, because I think you can direct me that way or, or we can proceed one more week and move forward.
Can I just add that even though we didn't require testing for prom, students who self tested and were COVID positive did not attempt?
That is true.
And that's a huge event, you know, so.
Steve, I see your hand up?
Yes, you know, this is a extremely difficult issue, and I can see both sides of, you know, how to come down on this. And so to me, it always goes back to what I've been saying for months is to think about why do we have our policies? And our, our policies doing what we want them to do. Let's always be reevaluating them, assessing them and seeing if they're actually working. To me, there's a huge difference between an indoor event and an outdoor event. When you look at the science in terms of the spread, all of the research I have seen is on the safety of outdoor events. And again, this is something that everyone has to decide what level of risk do they find acceptable? You know, if you want zero risk, the solution is to essentially test every day. You know, before anybody comes in, do a rapid test and only then let people come in. There are costs for that. We saw the costs with decisions we made last year where we had kids doing Zoom learning for months, when now the science says that actually they would have been safe coming in for the most part. And so, you know, again, I, I realize I am probably going to be on a different side than the rest of the committee on this. But what I would really like to see to make an informed decision is what do the health experts say about the risks of having somebody who's tested positive, one, two, three, four, five? How many days after the positive test for them to be playing outdoors while masked and socially distanced? And so to me, that's where I would like to listen to for something like this. And I would urge you, if possible, I know we used to have medical experts who advised us when we had the joint task force. I would love to reach out to them and then have that information to be able to share that with the community and to be able to share that with the parents you've talked to as to this is what the local health experts say. And so if it's possible to get that information and share that with the community, I would love to hear that. Thank you.
I don't know whose hand went up first.
I'm, I'm happy to wait.
Okay, Julia.
Yeah.
Julia, when you were pointing, you were pointing at me.
I hope if I pointed anywhere, you know, I was actually pointing at somebody other than me, but Jose was first. I, but I, I simply wanted to share that when I had COVID within, early May, it was very clear that all the guidance said you had to quarantine for five days. And if you didn't have symptoms at that point, you could wear a mask. If you were still testing positive, wear a mask and socially distance. And I appreciate, oh, oh God, do I appreciate the challenge of this situation. I, I do not feel comfortable as a school committee going against what Jake sees as appropriate. And so I am uncomfortable, like I, I think that that is, I, I don't want to ever be in a position of undermining. And I think that he has thought this through. So I'm going to share both those thoughts.
Thank you, Julia. Jose?
Thanks, Christina. It's, it sounds like, even from, from my perspective, given where we are in the year, it seems perhaps most prudent to stick with the policies that have gotten us this far. And I would argue have been quite effective at, at keeping, keeping as many of us in our district as safe as possible. That said, and I think it's sad truth is that we'll probably be living with this pandemic through the next academic year. And there may be an opportunity for us to evaluate some of these policies. And I would suggest that perhaps we either spend the summer or, or think about ways that, you know, we can prepare for living with this pandemic through the, the, you know, the upcoming academic year. And, and thank you, Jake, for, and your team for your incredible efforts and, and keeping, keeping us as, as safe as we can be.
Thank you. I would, you know, use this opportunity to say that the state will not be extending its testing program, either the pool testing program nor the follow up to the pool testing program. They will not be offering the at home tests that were offered to every family to, you know, They will not be offering the at-home tests that were offered to every family to, you know, one test each week and to our staff. You know, to, to Julia's point, so, so next year, we, we see all of these policies expiring at the end of the school year. And, and to me, the, the, the question is not, shouldn't, should a student who is positive participate in athletics? The question is, should we be forcing all of our athletes to pool test? If, if I am incredibly, I have no question that if a student is positive, they should not be participating in athletics for their own good or the good of anybody around them. The, the argument could be made that we're putting our teams at a competitive disadvantage by forcing them to test while other schools are not. And, and then we would depend on people that we trust, parents, guardians and caretakers to self-report. So, you know, our, our, our vision, I'm happy, Steve, to reach out to our medical advisors and get their take. It, it's a little bit like, I don't want to conflagrate this, that really, and, and I hate discussing things that really appear to be centered around one student. Because this is bigger than that, but it is a little bit like every student signs off and their family sign off that students will follow a chemical policy. You're not going to smoke, you're not going to drink, you're not going to use drugs during season. You're not going to, you, you know, if you're not at school for a day on a, on a certain day, you can't participate in an athletic thing. Because I've been accused of singling out athletes and, and being unfair and treating athletes unequally through this process. Athletes sign up to be athletes. They sign up to represent the school. If a student is caught drinking alcohol at a party and the school authorities find out about it, it's not the policy's fault that the student is not playing. It's, it's, it's a choice the student made. Now COVID is not a choice. But again, we have a policy that is to be protective of our, our student athletes' health, the community's health and the other team's health that we went into with eyes wide open. If, if it's time to end that policy a week before school's out and not require athletes pool testing, I will not feel undermined at all. We've, we've had a long run. We've had a long exhausting run through, uh, through, through COVID. But I, but I, if, if we were to do that, nobody on our side would feel undermined, but we certainly would urge families to consider continuing to test if your child is symptomatic. And, and, and think of your child's health before you let them go out onto a field to, to play a game. Steve?
So thank you. I was just going to say, you know, following up on what you said. You know, I, I think it would be great if we could get something from the medical experts to share with the community. So it's not just us talking. It's these are the people who have your experience in the front lines and this is their professional opinion. You know, one of the things, you know, as I've said is, I really want us to be thinking about are our policies actually effective? Initially, there was huge fear about having kids being within six feet. And then as the science came in, that changed. We had the shutdown of the elementary schools and the high school, middle school on Wednesdays for the deep cleaning. And so not all the policies that we're doing always have the impact that we hope. And so I just want us, as we're going forward, to be thinking, you know, are we really getting out of this policy what we want? You know, is the increase in protection, is that enough to counter away the decrease in the social emotional health of the community and just balancing those two, which is very difficult. You know, going forward for next year, when there's no pool testing, you know, I don't know, are there going to be discussions among the different schools as to how we want to handle that? Do we want to have, you know, athletes voluntarily, you know, testing before games? You know, if we're really worried about the safety of our children, do we want to require any team that comes to Mount Greylock for the rest of the season to have everybody, you know, test just as we're having our students test?
Ursula, was your hand up?
Yeah, it was. And I was rethinking and then I put it down, but I, I thought Steve, at first you were talking about our policy of not allowing athletes who were positive to test or to play, which is really not our policy, right? It's the CDC's policy. And I don't know how we think we could go around that. I also just feel like, right or wrong, we are what we are. There's one week left in school. I don't know. I, I just don't know why we would change it now. We're not doing it in the fall. We know that. I, do we really want to vote tonight to change it for the next week? I feel like this is kind of just a pointless thing to discuss at this point, but that's just my opinion.
Yep. I think we can agree that we have to explore policies around how we handle the ongoing pandemic this summer. And that's probably going to fall on the policy subcommittee and the administration to, to work out some of those details before it makes its way to the full committee. Um, anything else on that? All right. So any agenda requests? I see none. So does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I would slow move.
Curtis moves. Do I have a second?
Miller, I'll second.
Miller seconds. All in favor? Oh, I think Julia froze again. So.
We'll go reverse alphabetical. Miller, I.
Perfect.
Miller, I.
Green, I.
Elephant, by an I. This is hard. It is hard. Constantine, I.
Conrey, I. It wasn't that hard. If we had done it by first name, it would have been harder. The meeting is adjourned at 8:59 PM. This first name alphabetical, I think that would really throw us all off.